I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, October the 15th, 2024. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. For those who are not here tonight, you may watch this live on www.granberry.org/live. And certainly you can go to the meeting and the agenda portal any time later and pull up the meeting and review it again, I know for your viewing pleasure. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and call this to order and have Mr. or the Pastor Brock G., Associate Pastor of the First Baptist Church, lead us with the invocation. If you'll all stand, we'll continue standing for the pledges.
Heavenly Father, as we begin tonight, we want to pause and
humble ourselves before you and give you the honor and glory due your name. And Father, we thank you for being such a good God who loves us and is always faithful to us. And so, Father, we want to say thank you for our city leaders. Thank you for our civic servants and those that, the first responders that serve us and the people that make this Granberry so great. Father, we are just humbled and blessed to live here, and we know that that's a work of your hand. And God, you give a city its leaders, and so, Father, we say thank you for that. God, as we go about tonight, we want to pray and ask for your wisdom and your discernment to fill our hearts and our minds and our mouths as we make decisions about what happens here in this city, God. Help us to be wise, help us to be righteous and full of justice, to do what is best for all people for your glory. God, we thank you for this time tonight. God bless us and lead us by your Spirit, and we're thankful for your Son, Jesus, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Going to move right into proclamation and presentation. We have a proclamation today proclaiming October 2024 as Monarch Butterfly Migration Month. If the Monarch people will join me out front? Whereas the Monarch Butterfly is the Texas State insect and is known as the ambassador of the Americas for its multi-generation 3,000-mile migration across Canada, the United States, and Mexico. And whereas thousands of Monarch butterflies travel through Texas on their fall journey south to Mexico, stopping in Granberry's green spaces to show their brilliant orange and black wings as they search for nectar-rich flowers. This is carefully choreographed. Whereas researchers are trying to determine why the Monarch butterfly's population is sharply declining, possibly due to loss of habitat. And whereas to raise awareness of the importance of creating Monarch butterfly habitats, the Lake Granberry Master Gardeners maintain a demonstration garden to offer educational classes and to host a yearly outreach to encourage the community to plant milkweed and nectar plants in preparation for the Monarch butterfly migration through Granberry and Hood County. Now therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Monarch Butterfly Migration Month in Granberry and encourage all citizens to join the Lake Granberry Master Gardeners in celebrating the culmination of a year-long effort to sustain adult Monarch butterflies while on their migration through Granberry and Hood County. It's given under my hand the seal of the City of Granberry on this 15th day of October 2024. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very important to our community, to our ecology, to understand the life cycle of the Monarch butterfly. For it to sustain itself, we need to know the entire life cycle, and that's what we do as Lake Granberry Master Gardeners. We teach you how to romance the Monarch by planting the right plants in your garden and having both the nectar plants and the host plants available when they start their mighty migration through Hood County. They are migrating through here now. We celebrate every year, have a wonderful party the first Saturday of every October called Romancing the Monarch Butterfly Festival in the Lake Granberry Master Gardeners Demonstration Garden. It's a wonderful event. We release live Monarch butterflies. We've got training modules for kids and adults, and it's just a really nice celebration. So every year, we ask our citizens to work with us. Let us work with you and show you how you too can romance the Monarch butterfly, open up, roll out the welcome mat here in Granberry so the Monarchs coming in can raise their
We now have a presentation to the Granberry Police Department for becoming re-recognized as a Texas Police Chiefs Association Recognized Best Practices Agency.
families here in Granberry, and those siblings are the ones that end up migrating to Mexico.
And the presentation will be made by Chief Steve Stanford of the Bridgeport Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the diocese there, Chief Stanford, and we'll let you go ahead and begin the presentation.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor to be here, and it's an honor to come to a city where they still recognize our God and honor our country. What a, what a very, very good prayer by our pastor, so thank you for that. Very meaningful prayer. Mayor, City Council members, and Granberry community members, good evening. My name is Steve Stanford. I'm the Chief of Police in Bridgeport, Texas. But tonight, I'm here to represent the Texas Police Chiefs Association, where I serve as a Lead Assessor for the Association's accreditation program and also serve as the program's committee chairperson. With over 1,500 professional police chiefs in Texas, TPCA is dedicated to improving the quality of police services in Texas communities. The Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement several years ago. Many of you know about the accreditation programs for schools, universities, and hospitals. They are all programs of professional excellence, requiring some proof of compliance with professional standards. TPCA's program is a voluntary process where agencies must prove that they meet or exceed 173 demanding standards. These standards are based on Texas law, Texas court decisions, and professional best practices identified by Texas police chiefs. These standards address a full range of law enforcement operations, such as use of force, protection of citizen rights, vehicle pursuits, property and evidence management, and investigations, as well as internal investigations and administrative operations and oversight. This program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas, and agencies across the state are working diligently to meet these requirements. In August, trained assessors spent two days here in your community and at your police department. During this time, several internal and external staff interviews were conducted, along with several inspections of your police facilities and the operations. Assessors then rode with police officers to ensure compliance was happening in the field. Lead assessors submitted a summary report to the Accreditation Committee comprised of one sheriff and eight active police chiefs from around the state. The committee reviewed the report and voted to award the accredited status, and the vote was unanimous. During this process, your police department in Granberry, Texas, has proven that it meets or exceeds the best practices for professional law enforcement in Texas. Now listen to this. With over 2,700 law enforcement agencies, almost 2,800, just over 200 are accredited. Just over 200, less than 10%, and fewer have been re-accredited. This evening, I have the distinct honor as we officially recognize the Granberry Police Department's outstanding performance and achievement as a re-accredited police agency. What does this mean for your community? This means the accreditation ensures the elected officials, the city management, and the citizens of Granberry that their police department is operating in accordance with the best practices of Texas law enforcement. With its commitment to police excellence, this accreditation status means your police department is one of the best in the state of Texas. This certificate we will present this evening is symbolic. While it's a mark of professional excellence, it's the program's real value and the process they must complete to achieve it. The Granberry Police Department is a legitimate leader in Texas law enforcement, and you, this community, should be very proud of this accomplishment. Chief Calvin, could I have your team up here, please? I travel all across the state doing these assessments. I've done almost 40 of them, from Pampa, Texas, to the southern coast, from west Texas to east Texas. And I'll say this, and I stand by this, you have one of the very best police chiefs in the state of Texas. You also have one of the very best police departments. Congratulations on your re-accreditation.
It's just me. I didn't, hey, where y'all going? Wow. First thing I want to do is I want to thank my good friend, Chief Stanford, for taking time out of his personal schedule with his lovely wife, who just happened to join him with us tonight, for coming out and presenting this honor to these fantastic officers you have in front of you. I must say that this year was a little different than the last two times that we received this distinction and that we had to work our tails off at the very end to get that done. Deputy Chief Wiggington, Corporal Ingram, and several others really put their nose to grindstone to get us through the finish line on this one, and I want to thank them for their hard work and dedication just getting us through. It's an honor to have this re-accreditation given to us, and it's an example of these fine officers up here and the work and the dedication to professionalism that they show every day, and they go out there to prove to everybody that comes to town that we are the best there is in this state. So thank you for the time given us to get up here and have this honor presented to everybody and to y'all, and I will let y'all continue with your business at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, Chief. Chief, can you, can you keep these guys up here so we can shake their hand?
You want a picture?
I just want to shake their hand. Is that okay?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they're yours. Come on.
It doesn't get any more special when you have the law enforcement folks that we have in this town, and then for them to be recognized nationwide for what they do. It just, it doesn't get any more special than that. But there is also some other special people in the audience tonight. Could the Power for Life group come up and join us right here? We have these students. I've been asking them if they would come and visit with us. The only thing I told them was I wouldn't make them get up in front of the group. So sorry. And speak. Did Hector decide he's gonna speak?
Yeah, Hector.
Oh, Hector. All right. Hector, just very briefly, tell us who this fine group of people are here. Yeah, it's you.
All right, well, we're all from Stars Accelerated High School, and we are the Power for Life class, so basically Walt helps us get ready for kind of like our career in the future, you know? So he kind of helps us just with all that. I don't really know how, I think I summed it up for y'all, but I mean if
Looking forward in a positive environment for their career, how's that Hector?
Yeah.
And the reason Jeremy is here, the reason Chris is here, the reason I'm here, is one of the things that Walt does is ask us to come in and speak to, speak to this group. And I would have to say, every time that we come, it's, you always get this question. What's the best part of your job? And I guarantee you, it's being right there at that right time, at that moment, because meeting with these young, young adults who are our future is the best thing, best part of the job. Mr. Kaufman?
Oh, boy. Yeah, I, I would just say that when we get to go and, and meet with them, it's a real unique, one-on-one type experience. I've had all kinds of questions asked, from what do you do, to how much do you make, and all kinds of questions, you know? So you answer those questions, you go through it. It's a learning curve for everybody, and we get to know each other. Sometimes we get to hire somebody out of that group because they come and apply for a job, and that's always encouraging. So that's part of what we do, is try to mentor these folks right along, and Jeremy's had some time to think about what he wants to say.
How long do I get? Three minutes? Three minutes? It is, it's an incredible program. Every time Walt calls and says, "Hey, can you come out and talk to the kids?", I'm like 30 minutes early. I love it. It's exciting. I love interacting with them. They have great questions. They're also very complimentary. I'm always told I'm the best dressed of anybody that, that ever comes. It's, it's great. And so, I do like the way Walt tries to tailor around each of the kids, so, you know, maybe I might not go for a few months, and then he'll call me up and say, "Hey, we got a kid that wants to be a lawyer." Great, I'm there. We go in, and we have a great time, and I enjoy you guys. Ready for me to come back?
Yes, sir.
What about the mayor? No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
No. Yeah, come on.
And part of what he said is great, but he also talks forever, but he's the only one that I can't ever kick out of the room. But to have these, to have these people take time out of their day to come and donate their time to the kids, is really something special and unique to this, this community. And you should all be proud of what they do, because they really do take the time to spend an hour and a half to two hours a day during the class and come out and pour into them. That's all I can say.
Congratulations, y'all. We're probably near completing this program. Yeah. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Appreciate it. And watching our job postings, we're always needing to hire people, so thank y'all for coming.
and, and we have some encouraging statements and some recognition, so I think we've already had some pretty good recognition, but Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, first off, I just want to remind everybody that Thursday night at Grumps is an evening where you can go and be supported by the Granberry PD and part of your proceeds goes towards the, the group that support. I just went blank. There you go. So Mitch brought that up this morning and reminded us, and so, put it on your calendar, Thursday night, 6, 5, what is it? 5 to 8 at Grumps. Support a cop. What?
Burgers and badges.
Burgers and badges is the official logo. Thank you. And also want to remind everybody, this weekend, we've got a lot of staff working hard behind the scenes to pull off another great Granberry cleanup. Begins here at 8:30, here at City Hall, 8:30. Bring your gloves. We'll supply the trash bags, grabbers, safety vest, and Kroger water. Be careful, as teams are out on Highway 377, Loop 567, FM 4, Highway 144, and Crawford Avenue picking up and bagging trash. Our Parks Department then goes along and picks up those trash bags, and historically, we've picked up 2,000 pounds of trash, literally, every year we've done it, every event we've done this. So if you want to join that, please contact us. Also, simultaneous to that, we're having our shred it event. We're calling it shredded instead over at American Town Hall, which is at 220 North Travis. We can bring up to three banker's boxes full of paper, and we've got a shredding company there that'll shred it while, while you're there, and you don't have to worry about, don't have any metal clips or staples or anything like that, just paper only. And of course, the fire department will be there to assist everybody bringing those boxes to help them. You won't even have to get out of your car, so you can certainly tip the fire department for doing that. And then on the curb side, it's Bulk Trash Collection Day, where Waste Connections will let you put up to six items out by the curb that you need to get rid of, bulky items that normally don't go in your waste stream. And so that, have it out there by 7:00 AM. And these are just some of the things that our staff, our communication team is working, our Parks Department, our Internal Services Department are all working together to make Granberry beautiful. As you can tell, there's a lot that goes into picking up litter and a lot of coordinating, and we need all the volunteers we can get. Historically, we've had the high school participate with us as well, and Michael Ross has led that effort, and so we hope to see that again as well. So that's all I've got for tonight.
Counsel?
Oh, I do, I do. I need a do-over, Mayor. So Counsel just attended, and many of our staff attended, Texas Municipal League Annual Conference, picked up some great training, some valuable training was gathered by all, and obviously, we're back and implementing and looking to implement what we've learned. And I just want to thank the entire Counsel for going and participating and being willing to spend the time and invest. I know somebody probably had to burn vacation at work to be able to go, and I want to thank you for being able to do that, and hats off to you for, for going and meeting all those other Counsel members and benchmarking what we do compared to what they do, and of course, the classroom training is invaluable. So thank y'all.
Yeah. Other Counsel? Any other comments? Okay. Well, the kickoff to the, to the TMB meeting was just absolutely outstanding. In fact, the speaker was very, very much involved with what's going on in the communities as it relates to hiring and training and who you're working with. And I was, I was absolutely, well, a little bit, you know, full of myself when I learned that I am in the top 2% of the oldest people still working. True. Okay. Public, public comments? Do we have anything, Carl? Okay. I'm not gonna go ahead and spend time reading that. I'm gonna go ahead to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any items, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Counsel, you've seen these, we've discussed these some length, either weeks before or recently. Anyone want to pull anything off for further discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
6.2 and 6.3.
You want to pull 6.2 and 6.3?
Yes, thank you.
Counsel, anyone else want to pull anything? Okay. We'll go ahead, and I'm gonna see if we can get a motion to approve 6.1, 6.4, 6.5, and 6.6 under the consent agenda.
So move.
Mr. Corrigan makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Urban Deere, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I believe that will pass 6-0. We'll move to the deliberation agenda, and we will open up with 6.2. Consider approving amendment to the city's personnel manual to establish a daily per diem rate for meal expenses during city business traveling in accordance with U.S. General Services Administration. That's the GSA. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. We've been operating under a fixed-based reimbursement fee for nine and a half years, probably the same fee much longer than that, but I know that we've been here, I've been here nine and a half years, so it's time to look at that. And we've been talking about the GSA schedule for nine and a half years, and Michael finally decided it was time to do something about it, because I think it was affecting the employees personally in a negative way, and it was time to do something pretty severe. So I'll let Michael Ross, our deputy city manager, talk to you this issue.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel. This is just an ministerial change, in our opinion, to bring our policy up to date for travel. This one component is for the daily per diem meal rate that we get. It's, as Chris said, it's been generally fixed for some time. This allows us to stay current with the GSA, which is a federal website, applies to federal employees, that he's probably used, if he's traveled under that, probably used to that. And that's what this does, is similar to the IRS mileage rate. We'll go ahead and I'm gonna see if we can get a motion to approve six point one, six point four, six point five and six point six under the consent agenda.
So move.
Mr. Corrigan makes a motion. Mr. Oberdeere seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that will pass six and oh. We'll move to the deliberation agenda and we will open up with six point two. Consider approving amendment to the city's personnel manual to establish a daily per diem rate for meal expenses during city business traveling in accordance with U.S. General Services Administration. That's the, the GSA. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. We've been operating under a fixed-based reimbursement fee for nine and a half years, probably same fee much longer than that. But I know that we've been here, I've been here nine and a half years. So it's time to look at that. And we've been talking about the GSA schedule for nine and a half years. And Michael finally decided it was time to do something about it. Because I think it was affecting the, the employees personally in a negative way and it was time to do something pretty severe. So I'll let Michael Ross, our deputy city manager, talk to you this issue.
Thank you, Chris, counsel. This is just an ministerial change, in our opinion, to bring our policy up to date for travel. This one component is for the daily per diem meal rate that we get. It's, as Chris said, it's been generally fixed for some time. This allows us to stay current with the GSA, which is a federal website, applies to federal employees that he's probably used, if he's traveled under that, probably used to that. And that's what this does. It's similar to the IRS mileage rate. As it changes, our, our travel in our personal vehicles changes with it. This ties it to this, to this GSA site and will help us stay current. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions. It's pretty standard in the industry of government travel. Thank you.
I, I think I'd like to add to Michael's presentation that this GSA schedule varies different prices for different regions throughout the country. So like a hamburger costs less in, maybe the, in Granberry than it would in Dallas or in Austin or in San Antonio.
Correct.
Or, or a lunch at Mi Familia would be cheaper in Granberry than it would be in San Antonio. So it, it moves with that. And also the, the, when we fully get everything automated, the form that we use that we're recommending that y'all approve as part of this ordinance will automatically date and, and post that for the right amount in those categories to remove any inconsistency. So like when the, when you tell, you tell the docu-form, "Hey, we're going to Georgetown, Texas for training," it's gonna plug in the GSA rates when you put in how many lunches and meals you need. So it's, we're trying to get to that point where it's fully automated, removes all ambiguity out of it. Many times the girls or the ladies, I should say, are sitting in her office reviewing the reports that are submitted. And they're reviewing everything and having to change things because different situations have happened. So anyway, we're trying to make that a little easier for finance department. And obviously, they've got plenty of paperwork to shuffle around already. We need to make that easier. But we'll answer any questions y'all may have.
So, Michael, is that GSA rate's gonna be destination location that you punch in the zip code and that's gonna give you the per diem rate for lunch, breakfast, lunch and dinner? Is that correct? And hotel rates as well?
Yes, sir.
It's not gonna be based on Granberry itself? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then first and last day of travel is usually at a substantially lower rate at that rate. Is that correct?
It's, it's in the GSA as well. It's all built into there. Yes, sir.
All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we might want to talk that, we're talking about the per diem rate for meal expenses. We're not talking about hotel rates because we try to book the hotel where the person's activity is. And sometimes that costs more. But we tried to get the, the government funding, the rate, because whoever's putting on the training usually has a block of rooms at a discounted rate. So that's what we usually go with. But this is for the meal allowance.
Yes, that is correct. Our goal is to always get the, the, the block rate, as Chris describes, for like TML where we were last week. And that could be slightly higher than the GSA rate. I didn't compare the two since it wasn't applicable. But that's, that's what TML and everyone strives for, is to get those rates down as much as possible because you have such a large, large quantity of attendees at things like TML. But this is tied to the meal expense per diem only, this one change here, this, this part.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, Michael, when you travel then, you get reimbursed the per diem rate whether you spend the money or not? Is that correct?
No, you have to. The, the idea is that you, actually, if you go out for a meal, then you would get reimbursed for it. For instance, when we pay to attend a luncheon at TML or a breakfast or something like that, you would not get reimbursed for something the city paid for ahead of time to attend like that, like those meals that are part of the conference. No double dipping like that. So if you, if you, if the city buys those tickets for us like they do for us to attend awards banquets and things like that at the conferences, you can't get a per diem for that.
I understand. My question is, if you don't spend, I mean, the, the amount is sixty-eight dollars a day and it's broken down by breakfast, luncheon, dinner. But if you don't, if you, if you're on your own, you're going to a, a meeting or a conference or something you're required to go to, do you get reimbursed? Do you get paid the sixty-eight dollars? Or do you turn in receipts and it's up to sixty-eight dollars?
You would get the per diem under our, that's, that's our typical process here, is that you would get the amount allocated for a per diem for breakfast, per diem for lunch and per diem for dinner.
Okay, thank you.
And Bruce, just to let you know, this, this rate that you're seeing on my notes is, is based on our zip code. That's the per diem rate for Granberry if somebody was coming into Granberry. Now, if the person went to Dallas or Fort Worth, that current rate could be, I think, when I looked at Dallas or Fort Worth, it was a slightly higher than that.
I read all that.
Okay.
And I would like to add that also, we, we, we do make considerations for dietary needs. It, it could be that someone's attending a, a, a meeting and all they offer is a continental breakfast where that's a bunch of starches and things that a person may or may not want to eat or should not health-wise eat. So we, we will make those exceptions too on the, on the fly. But if there's, you know, protein-based meals involved or some people are, have other health issues, celiac or whatever, there, there may be dietary needs that we need to fund something other than what's normal for that group of people at that training event. And so we're sensitive to that. So we would certainly use this for that. Thank y'all.
So we're asking counsel to please consider approving the amendment to the city's personnel manual to establish a daily per diem rate for meal expenses during city business traveling in accordance with the U.S. General Services Administration.
Okay. Well, it says meal expenses. So I, I understood that, that, you know, I think the example you used was sixty-eight dollars, that if I came in and didn't eat anything, I would get sixty-eight dollars. Is that tru, is that right?
If you turned in for those, yes, sir.
Oh, no. I would, I turned in zero, though.
If you turned in zero, you'll get zero.
Okay.
The idea-
If I turned in up to fifty dollars, I'd get, I would get fifty dollars, not sixty-eight. You're not gonna get, it's a sort of a max, right?
You would get, you would get reimbursed what you turned in that met the, the guidelines for the-
Actual expense not to exceed the per diem. No?
I, I need to say something. This is for our employees.
Yeah.
Okay?
Primarily.
This is not for the city council. The city charter says you will be reimbursed for your expenses. Okay? So what you just went through, you probably had to buy a couple of meals and the rest were ticketed or hospitality events.
Right.
So you didn't have to do anything. So this is a whole different deal for counsel. We're not talking about, this is for our employees. So like somebody, let's say we've got a police officer going to training in, say Conroe, okay? They're gonna turn in a, a travel request in advance of travel. And we're gonna write them a check in advance to pay for their, their meals if they have a, if they're having to use their credit card, we reimburse them for their credit card for the charge for the room. We prepay people to go train. Okay? And that's what we do with these per diem rates. Now then, if somebody comes back and says, "Hey, you paid me too much," we will certainly take that money back. But the way it's working right now is people don't get enough as it is and they're still not gonna get enough as it is.
Mayor, I think, I think there's some, I think you're, for the per diem rate, that's just their daily rate, sixty-eight dollars. That's calculated, I mean, whatever their current rate is for their location, they get that no matter what. From my understanding, they get that flat fee. If it's sixty-eight dollars or ninety-three dollars, they get that and they use it however they want. If they want to spend twenty dollars for breakfast and ten dollars for dinner, that's up to them. But they get that flat per diem rate regardless of they spend it all or they don't spend any of it all. They still get the sixty-eight.
And we do that now with our current rates.
Correct.
We pre, we prepay it where when they leave, they've got the money in their pocket to go get their training done. It's pretty simple. Not everybody has the ability to cash roll a whole week's worth of training somewhere and then come back and wait for a couple of weeks and do the paperwork and then submit it and get it turned in. It just doesn't work that way.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. I see the advantage there. Okay. Sorry. Any other? Okay. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. Okay.
He's next.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve agenda item six point two as stated.
Try here a second.
Second.
Mr. Wildley seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Aye here, no nays. Pass is six and oh. We'll go to six point three. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-four dash fifty-nine, amending Articles one point five, section one point five, zero, point two-two-seven of the City of Granberry Code of Ordinances, master fee schedule to provide for the collection of fees for illegally placed political signs. Mr. Kaufman?
I'll leave this to Michael to make the presentation on it. He's the one that put this ordinance together and been working on it.
Well, this is another, what we would consider ministerial change for your consideration. Our current fee schedule has an exemption to retrieving signs that were illegally installed. There's a fifty-dollar fee for the first offense, a hundred dollars for the second offense and a hundred dollars plus administrative fees for the third offense. Political signs are currently exempted in our fee schedule and-
During the fee schedule, during political season.
Dur, well, it doesn't say that, but yes, sir. It, okay. Okay. Then yes, we're talking about not exempting those and making those signs apply to the same fee schedule requirements for retrieving sign costs as any other sign in the city. And so that's the recommended change based on, I think it was around thirty-six signs that were, were collected when the political season began. And we learned that the political signs were exempt. And so this was just something we brought, we're bringing before counsel that would be in effect next time around for the political season to begin.
It, it all goes to Gilbert versus Arizona lawsuit. Our, our attorney can certainly give you some information on it, but it's equal protection. I mean, if you're gonna charge a fee for an illegal sign for something that says haircut six ninety-nine and not for a political sign, you're not being fair and equitable to everybody. So that's kinda where we're at.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Oberdeere.
Yeah, that's, this is something that I just, you know, when, when I was looking into this, you know, that's, one of the things is, you know, there's a lot of, lot of information when it comes to political signs, you know? Where's the right location? Who, who gives, you know, the, the actual spot? Is it legal? Is it not legal? You know, anybody that's been in, in politics or running for an office have these political signs. And sometimes you just don't know. You don't know where to put the signs. And when they come to the city, they don't wanna get in trouble. They don't wanna, you know, get their signs taken up because they're, they're there to try to advertise for their, their position and also get that out to the public. So one of the things or some of the questions I have was for the city attorney is who gives the city the authority to pick up these signs? Who, because it's, if it's in the right-of-way, if it's in text dot right-of-way, it, who gives us that authority for the texts, for us to pick up political signs? So I'm gonna turn it over to-
I can answer that one.
To-
Okay. This is understated, I didn't know. Go ahead.
So I, I, I understand what you're saying because it gets very confusing when you looked at, look at, I think it's chapter three ninety-three from the Transportation Code. The authority is, is not actually granted to municipalities. It's granted to sheriffs and constables, right? And, and I've had that question come up before. People are like, "Where, where do you have the authority to pick this up?" Right? And so where that authority comes from is from a municipal maintenance agreement. And that is a, a document that every city that has a text dot right-of-way that runs through it has executed with, with, with text dot. And that's for the enforcement of keeping the right-of-ways unencumbered. Any kind of obstructions that are within the right-of-way even prevents the planting of trees and things like that without text dot permission. And so the, the City of Granberry has had this municipal maintenance agreement since nineteen sixty-eight is the oldest one that I can find. But since nineteen sixty-eight, we've had this municipal maintenance agreement with them to enforce their rules and regulations. And they have a policy manual that they update annually that they put out. And, and part of that is, it is illegal to put political signs in the text dot right-of-way. And so we're charged through that municipal agreement, there's actually a provision in there, in that agreement that specifically tells us to enforce those things. So we, we, the authority to enforce that comes from, from, from text dot and from, from the legislature, giving them the authority to contract with us to do that. And then, so we have the authority to do it. The, the issue with this agenda item is that, I don't know the reason, but for some reason in two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance was passed that updated section one point five, point two-seven-seven of our sign ordinance, which created fees for illegally placed signs, signs in the right-of-ways. We also, because we are a home rule city with a charter, we have the authority pursuant to the local government code to implement certain, it's, it's not complete, but certain ordinances to prevent signs and certain types of signs in, in even our city right-of-ways. And so the issue that you get into is, well, we're going to regulate some certain signs in the text dot right-of-way, but not all of them. And so the concern with that is, well, the, the, the fees for these illegally placed signs need to be based on content neutrality. And that's going back to what, what Mr. Kaufman was saying earlier, that's the Gilbert versus Arizona case that came down a few years ago. That talks about, you can't regulate some sign because of what it says. Either you have the authority to regulate it or you don't and you need to treat everything equal. And so in order to avoid someone filing a lawsuit based on that, that equal protection issue or the lack of content neutrality, the best way to treat this is to go back to that two thousand and eighteen ordinance that, that added this line that, that says political campaign signs during appropriate seasons are exempt and treat them the same as all other signs. And when we go out and we collect a sign, we charge everyone the same fee regardless of what the sign says. And so we, we step back from that to be cautious and to bring this to you guys so that you could fix this, this issue here so that we can then enforce across the board these, these fees equally.
Thank you. And, and Chris, what's the importance for us to enforce this? I mean, I know that you've, you've given us some, some, some insight about some, maybe some franchise agreements that we have with local entities and vendors throughout the City of Granberry. So can you emphasize on that?
Yes, sir. I would, I would just like to say that somebody driving a T-post into a fiber optic cable is not gonna receive a very favorable invoice in the mail. They don't realize that, but they're out driving T-posts and anywhere where you dig in a right-of-way, you're supposed to call eight-one-one and have people come locate lines. I would just advise anybody that's putting up any kind of a, what I call a bandit sign, little temporary sign, if they don't, they shouldn't put it on somebody's property that they haven't asked. And I think that's what happens in a lot of cases is overzealous political supporters pick up signs for their friend that's running for office and they just go pepper the neighborhood with them or the public property wherever they think they can put it. And then we end up cleaning up the mess the next day. So it's unfortunate. There's a, there's a statute that's supposed to be written on each sign. And this year, they're not on the signs. The state, it's illegal to put these signs on a public right-of-way. And I think, you know, I was talking to a citizen about four years ago, three years ago about this issue where they were placing the signs out by the curb. And, and it's in, that's in the street right-of-way. Even though they technically own it, it's dedicated as a street right-of-way. And, and we, we can't have people putting political signs on public property. And, and that's where the rub comes in is, "Well, it's my property." I said, "Yeah, but you ded-" when it was, the street was created, it was dedicated for public use. And so you, and, and finally, I said, "You really don't want political banners on city property. It's against the federal law." The Hatch Act is, specifically prohibits government facilities and government employees. They're breaking the law like crazy right now. They've got a district attorney from California promoting a senator in Texas. You got police, Border Patrol promoting and supporting a senator for- You got police, Border Patrol promoting and supporting a senator for Texas. Those folks are violating the Hatch Act, and there's just nobody willing to do anything about it. So, here's the thing. You go back to any, any government that's taking over the world, what do you see on every government building? Their flag, not the, not the United States flag, but their flag. You know, that's, that's insurrection. And so, it may be freedom of speech, but you can't do it on public property. So, you see these flags right now that are sold in, in, in the mainstream public for political purposes or whatever? You can't fly those on public property. Everybody gets that. What's the difference between a campaign sign being on public property? Nobody seems to wanna understand that. It's the same principle. It's the same law, so.
Okay.
Anyway, you'll do with it as you please, but we brought it to you.
Jeremy and Chris, thank you for that insight. Mike, thank you for working on this. I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention on what, who gives the authority to the city and how, and the reason that we pick up political signs is because they're in the, in the right-of-way. And most of those right-of-ways carry a lot of our sewage, our internet services, you know, water services, you know, basic services that you need in your, in, in your own neighborhood. So, we, we deal with this on a yearly basis on two different campaign seasons. So, just be mindful on, on where you put those political signs. Thank you, Mayor.
I might just add that text dot has actually sent me a letter in the past requiring us to fulfill the terms of that maintenance agreement and go remove the signs. And, and we did, and one of my employees tore his ACL doing it. So, there's a reason we don't wanna have to do this. It, it, it takes effort, and the guy had to have surgery over it. So, it's, it's important that we follow the rules. And I would just encourage everybody, before you put a sign, get permission from the property owner. Property owner knows where his property is, for the most part.
For, for the most part. Other comments? Questions here? Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion for, this is 6.3, to adopt ordinance number 2459, amending Article 1.50, Section 1.50277 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances, master fee schedule to provide for the collection of fees for illegally placed political signs?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Widely moves. Mr. Vale seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I believe that passed six and oh. All right. Move to the deliberation agenda. First one, 7.1, is consider adopting ordinance number 2462, granting a non-exclusive franchise with Atmos Energy for the delivery and sale of natural gas within the corporate boundaries of the city of Granbury. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Y'all are familiar with franchise agreements. It's the agreements we have with various utility companies that use our streets and right-of-ways and public right-of-ways to install their infrastructure and deliver utilities or internet or other services to, to your homes and businesses. In this situation, we've renewing or updating our ordinance for the Atmos Energy, Natural Gas Franchise Agreement. We don't have one in place currently. They have been paying the same fee that was paid in the previous expired agreement. We've been working through this for over a year, getting the wording back and forth between staff, our legal counsel, and their legal counsel to get it to where we're happy with it, and we finally developed one that satisfies all the needs. I think one of the instances that we worked on that took quite some time was whenever, whenever we would need them to move a utility because of something we're doing, the old agreement and the template that they sent me was pretty wide open and really didn't have much teeth in order to motivate them to move a, a utility, in this situation, a gas utility, out of the way if, if it was in our way of a project on a street or a right-of-way. And, and so, we put that in there where there's some commonality. If they can't move quick enough, then, then the city manager or designee of the city manager and their field superintendent or whoever it is that's specified in there would work out a suitable date and time for all that to be accomplished. Also, we added some provisions in there that require them to come and, and document their contractor, who, who their subcontractor is that's doing the work, provide, go through the process to be a contractor. In other words, have insurance on file to where if they damage or interfere with our other services or another utility, they have insurance in place to stand behind that and take care of what the damage they cause. We also have an identification of where they're doing the work and, and what they're gonna be doing. And then, finally, to make sure that, that they repair the street back to good condition instead of leaving it with a big pothole in the middle. And, and so, all that's put into this agreement. And of course, the 5% franchise fee that, that comes to us through this is, remain the same. And so, we're, we're not changing that. We're just leaving that the same. So, be happy to answer any questions you may have, but basically, this is a housekeeping item for everybody involved. Atmos wants us to have a, a current ordinance, and we certainly need one, and so, we prepared this one for you.
Okay. Council, does, are there other questions on this? No? Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 2462, granting a non-exclusive franchise with Atmos Energy for the delivery and sale of natural gas within the corporate boundaries of the city of Granbury?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Overdier?
So moved.
Make some motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I believe that will pass six and oh. 7.2, consider approving a gateway at the moments in time hike and bike trail entrance north of City Hall at North Houston Street, giving city manager or his designee the ability to work with the Shanley Park Association on the exact placement of gateway. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'm real excited about this activity that's going on, and Aaron has been working closely with the folks involved, and so, just, I'll ask him to step up and share. He's our Internal Services Director, Aaron McLean.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, city manager. The Shanley Park Association is proposing a gateway into the existing trail system that passes through Shanley Park. Shanley Sculpture Garden is a project that is underway by the Shanley Park Association within the park. The first two sculptures are scheduled to be placed on their newly constructed concrete basis later this month. This gateway may be constructed in phases as funding is available. Donations to the Shanley Park Association will be the intended source of funding and the gateway project overseen by that association. Got, I see there's several board members in the audience today. Although Shanley Park is not owned by the city of Granbury, the city's moments and times hike and bike trail passes through the park, for this reason, this item is being brought before city council for approval. And of course, that trail system is just outside the, the window here, north of this building. And there are no city funds being requested for this project at this time. In the attachment, you'll see the parks board minutes where they also reviewed this and recommended approval and for it to come to council for review. There's a rendition that shows the, the gateway, and also a page that is, a picture that's taken from North Houston Street, looking back down the trail system. And we're also asking that the city manager have the ability to, to work with the association for the exact placement of, of this gateway. We want to be mindful and not block any view of the new sculpture that will be installed. And there, also no, no fencing being considered at this time either. There is some fencing pictured in the earlier rendition. If y'all have any questions, I could try to answer those or someone from the, from the association, possibly. And that, that arch, or that, that gateway is approximately, it's just under 15 feet tall, I believe. It looks like it's about 20 feet wide, and we have considered, you know, we may have to get heavy equipment back here to work on either this bridge or the backside of City Hall at some time. So, we want to always maintain easement through here or around that structure if we can't fit under it wherever it's placed. So, that's also in our minds when we consider the placement.
And one last consideration I want everybody to be aware of is, on the top right picture there, that, that shows that probably half a million dollar sculpture where it's gonna sit and, and proportionate. And we wanna make sure that we don't detract from it as we build this new archway. So, we'll have to work together to figure out exactly where that needs to go. That was part of the agreement with the foundation that we would make sure it was visible.
Comments and questions? No?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale.
I just think this is terrific. I mean, when I reviewed the agenda item and read exactly what, you know, the plan was, what the purpose was, and then looked at some of the renderings, I, I think this will be a absolutely wonderful addition back in the park as you lead, you know, people through the park. I think it's, I think it's a terrific program. Thanks, Aaron. Great job presenting this tonight.
Thank you. So, the, the, the motion here would be to consider approving a gateway at the moments in time hike and bail, hike and bike trail entrance north of City Hall at North Houston Street, proving the gateway, which we see here, and giving the city manager or his designee the ability to work with the Shanley Park Association on the exact placement. So, while we're approving the gateway, we are, through this motion, give, or through this, this, not an ordinance, what do we have here? Council agenda. We are giving our city manager and his designee the ability to work with Shanley Park to properly place it. Okay? We're all clear? Do I hear a motion based on what I said there?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes the motion. Mr. Overdier will second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That passes six and oh. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanley Park folks.
Yes, thank you so very much.
For excited about the garden.
Yeah. 7.3, moving right along here, we're gonna consider approving a recommendation from the Granbury Cultural Arts Commission to authorize the out-of-the-box utility box art wrapping program. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. This is another little project we're excited about. We've been talking about it for quite some time, and finally, got some, got some legs to it. So, Ms. Dooley, our director of tourism, will fill us in, and I believe some folks here from that Cultural Arts Commission are here as well. They, they may have something to say. I don't know.
I hope so. I hope so. Thank you, Mayor, city council, Mr. Kaufman. We are very excited to bring this before you today. We wanted to have all of our ducks in a row to make sure we did it correctly, but we are here tonight to ask the city council to consider approving our recommendation from the Cultural Arts Commission for the out-of-the-box utility box wrapping program. The Granbury Cultural Arts Commission has been working to provide a program for utility box wrapping with, featuring local artists. In this program, artists would submit their art for consideration to be placed on a box in the form of a vinyl wrap. So, you don't actually paint on the box. It's a vinyl wrap that would last approximately two to three years. The wraps would be purchased by a sponsor, and then the artist would be compensated a small stipend from the sponsorship as well. There would be no wording or logos that would be placed on the box, and the city council and text dot would have final approval on all the boxes. Coincidentally, this is October, so in October, Visit Granbury promotes all of the things, art, tourism related, and we are actually, there's so many things going on that we're actually calling it Arttober, and we have an entire campaign promoting the arts. This time last year, we were proudly receiving the Granbury Cultural District designation at the Harvest Moon Festival. There is no financial impact on the city. It would be covered by sponsors, sponsorships to the program, and the staff is recommending approval for the out-of-the-box art project in the spirit of showcasing Granbury's growing art cultural, art, art culture and tourism appeal. And with that said, we also provided photographs of samples of what they would look like and the, and the locations for all of the text dot boxes that we would have to then go and each time ask for permission with them again. They would approve it, and then we could bring it back to the council to approve the art. So, with that said, we have Cora Worley, who is the chair of the Cultural Arts Commission here. She may wanna add something, Cora? And then, I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
So, thank you, Tammy. That was pretty much all the details. All I guess I wanna add is that we are so excited about this. This is gonna be a thing you see when you're driving to town. It's gonna be one of the first things you see. You're gonna say, why is that box not gray metal anymore? Now, it's beautiful. And we've got, I think, 25 of these boxes around town. It's gonna make a difference. There's our map right there. It's gonna make a difference to people driving around town. You know, we've committed to be an art-centric community, and it's just a good example of getting that done. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, when I was reading this item the other night, I showed this to my wife. I'd sometimes share whether, sometimes, she probably didn't care what we do up here. But she really liked it. She said, I've seen this other places.
Yes.
And, and was real excited about it. I thought, I thought this looks great. If I had a comment, it would be, since Granbury's motto is where Texas history lives, it'd be kinda nice if the theme of these would have to do with, you know, the history, the state. You know, some of these pictures look like that, horses, blue bonnets, things like that. But I, I think the program looks great.
Thank you. We do offer the sponsors the alternative to pick their own art or even to have their own favorite artists submit art and then pick it. So, we'll keep in mind that the historical context is important.
And I also like the fact that it's just art for art's sake. It's not, without having words on it, it's not promoting anybody or businesses or things like that.
Yeah, it's not advertising.
I just, I think the program looks great.
Great, thank you.
Is the artist's name even on the, on the, on the rendering?
I think we're allowed to put the artist's name on it, but we can't put any advertising. We can't put the sponsor's name. We can tell people who sponsored which one on the websites, which we're planning to do.
Say that again?
Well, the sponsor can't put their name on the box, which some of them are gonna wanna do. So, what we're saying instead is that we will tell everyone that you sponsored it, and you can put it in your social media and your website, and we'll put it on the Visit Granbury and the Granbury Arts website, so people will still know that you did it. And we already have some potential sponsors. We're actually ready to go on this one.
I like what Mr. Widely says. It's arts for art's sake.
Me too.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
We'll quote you on that.
This, this ties in, this conversation ties in perfectly with that political sign or those business signs on state right-of-way. It's, you just can't advertise on public property.
Right.
They'll let us put art on their boxes, which is public property, but you can't advertise. And so, political ads are advertising, you know, haircuts are advertising, whatever. You see these little signs everywhere. They're advertising. They're trying to get your business, trying to get your money, and they're illegal. And that's why we can't put sponsor names on these boxes.
Right.
We can't put, I guess somebody could put, welcome to Granbury. I bet that'd fly, but it still has to be approved by text dot before it goes up, and it'll come before you too after text dot approves it.
Right.
Thank you. This is awesome.
Good deal. Thank you.
Mayor? Yes, Mr. Vale.
So, Chris just answered one of the questions I had. What, what is the process? So, text dot approves it, then it comes to us? Okay, that's how they work. You're saying no? Yes? Yes. Okay. And I guess the other question was, so, two to three-year life cycle, so they come back around. Will the same sponsor be responsible for ordering another wrap to keep them fresh?
They could, they could be. The sponsor is responsible for the box, and even if it is damaged, if it, a car runs into it or something like that, it has to be replaced, then they would have to redo the wrap, which should be a simple process.
I think it's a great program. I used to drive up Highway 26 when I lived in South Lake, and through the HEB area, there's some on the corners and some places, and I always noticed them when I went by. I thought they were very creative, just added a little something, and I like Bruce's idea. Just stay, you know, obviously, artists are, you know, you give them latitude to do what they do, but something keeping with the city and Celebration Capital or, you know, something with where Texas history lives. So, I think it's a great program.
Thank you.
Other? Other comments? Okay. Other, other comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve a recommendation from the Granbury Cultural Arts Commission to authorize the out-of-the-box utility box art wrapping program? Mr. Widley?
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Vale seconded that? All in favor say yes, aye, aye. All say, all opposed say nay. I hear no nays, we'll say six and oh, that passes. Congratulations, thank you. Okay. I now declare Granbury City Council is convened into open session, all members are present. City council go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, section five-five-one-oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney, pending or contemplated litigation, five-five-one-oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, five-five-one-oh-seven-four, personnel matters, city secretary, municipal judge, annual, annual review, five-five-one-oh-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. I now declare the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session, there was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Counsel, any other action?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to award our city secretary and municipal court judges a four percent merit increase.
Hear a motion?
I second that motion.
Mr. Widley seconds, all in favor say yes?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? The yeses have it six and oh. Thank you. Is there other, anything else? Nothing else? Counsel, we're all clear? Okay. There being no other further business, I declare the meeting closed.